Good evening. The Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, December 6th. We'll come to order. Is there anything that's on the agenda that we're not going to hear? It's going to be carried over?
So the A and R for One Campbell Road has submitted a withdrawal request. And I have a technical question associated with that. So they, the applicant submitted a letter-
Okay, but none of the, I just wanted to make sure before we start, that none of the items on the agenda are going to be-
30 I or in 1975 Salem Street have continued.
So, okay, so the, so we're just going to hear the Princeton Development, the new public hearing, and then the discussion items? Okay, good, okay. So it's all yours, the A and R, okay?
Okay. So the A and R, the applicant requested to withdraw. So, you know, there's a 21-day appeal there where the board has to act on an application. The application calls for either acknowledging that it approves the A and R plan, or that it denies it and says it needs to go through the subdivision process. There isn't really a box to check off for a withdrawal.
Then deny it, and, yeah.
Well, then, you guys would need a motion.
So, would somebody like to make a motion to instruct the planner to issue a denial for the A and R for One Campbell Road?
I'll make a motion to deny the A and R for One Campbell Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Without prejudice, right?
Without prejudice, correct.
Okay. So we're on to our public hearings, and we're coming close to the end, correct?
Very close to the end.
So, can you tee up whether we had anything that was open, and then we can go into the form of the decisions and any other issues that are on the table?
Okay. Yep, so since the last meeting, the Conservation Commission did hear the applicant again at last week's meeting. For the most part, the site design has been accepted, is my interpretation. Lisa Eggleston actually attended that hearing and provided a very detailed overview of the design of the stormwater system. They did not close their hearing, they held it open. They are going to pursue more detail on the O and M plan and a construction sequencing plan. So, for their next hearing, I think they're going to get more into detail of those two. However, the overall design and scope was reviewed in fairly good detail.
Sure.
Okay. I just want to bring up the parking numbers. So, through the course of this, there's been a lot of tweaking to the site plan, as you know, for landscaping, moving parking away from the rotary. I think that early on, the fire truck access might have reduced some of the parking. So, in the draft decisions that were circulated, I just want to make sure everybody's aware, the res, the parking reduction permits apply to both applicants now. The residential is a reduction of 30 parking spaces, and the commercial seven. And again, it was a result of a lot of tweaks that were done, kind of at the preference of the board, as well as some of the civil review.
So, is that a total of 37?
Yes, on approximately 600. It's on the layout of the material plan.
Please sit.
So the overall requirement is 611 and 574 being provided.
Okay. And then, obviously, there is an acknowledgement that this is a mixed-use thing, so there's a little bit of sharing.
Yep. Yep, and all the justification are in the draft permits. I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware.
Okay.
So, the last item that was under review was the sewer design. And the DPW set up an escrow account, and they had Wooded and Curran review the design of the system, both onsite and off. They did a flow analysis and capacity study. And the results of that, I think everybody should have a copy of the memo in hard copy. But the result of that is this, some minor changes onsite, that because these have come in so late, and the plans were submitted November 21st, I took the approach to just condition those onsite improvements within the decision prior to the endorsement of plan. And so, we would, and that's consistent with some stormwater things that are just loose ends that need to be added to the plan. So the onsite are conditioned, however, there's some offsite improvements to two sewer segments, one on Old Farm Road, and one actually off of the end of French Farm Road, which is in the wooded area between the end of that subdivision and Ray's Pump Station. So it's been a lot of discussion around the replacement of those two. One is to be replaced and upsized, and one is just a 70-foot section of pipe that is, the slope needs to be corrected.
So, the improvements that were talked about in this plan, first of all, we're all okay, I mean, everybody's okay with the list of what all the improvements are that they recommend and so forth?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no issue about that. It's a question of execution, because they can't execute until the town does its piece, right?
Meaning?
Well, I mean, if, if the town doesn't fix those two things you just mentioned, they can't make those changes, right?
Well, it comes down to, the applicant could be conditioned to do it. The town could agree to do it on their own, but it has to be replaced prior to certificate of occupancy, is what the DPW has submitted.
Okay.
They don't want those buildings occupied prior to these two segments being addressed.
Okay.
So, so the Planning Board can't condition the DPW to do it, the, the applicant's the holder of the permit. There, there's been a lot of discussion over getting it done. The DPW has communicated they'd be willing to do the work, however, you can't condition that they do it.
Right.
And so there's some technical work there. They have been in support of not only doing the work, but doing the permitting, they, doing the engineering and the as-built. So, it now comes down to how do we format the decision related to that issue. But everybody's in agreement that work needs to be done, everyone's in agreement that-
Can't we just say, sort of almost, I know you use the word passive voices, that it just will be done?
I'm sorry?
You can just use passive voice, saying that this will be done before-
So, in the draft language that you just would have received tonight, council has reviewed this, and she's proposing the applicant shall cause the work to be done, so then specifies as the work. So she used the word "cause,"
Okay.
And then there's some specific things that have to turn in the satisfactory performance, saying everything was done according to the plans, that the permitting would have to have been done, and I think there's one other one in the draft decision. But, it, it's all pointed to the applicant at this point. Now, from, the applicants to speak to what direction they like to take that in, but it allows for maybe another agreement, that somebody who has the authority to enter into agreement between applicants and DPW to work out details of that work. It's just, as far as drafting the decision, my struggle was, you can't draft, you can't require the DPW to do it, so I've defaulted to the applicant, which has been the case, as far as I can tell, all the time. And, and so, other than that last sewer piece, you've been provided draft decisions for common driveways, height waivers, and these site plans. They're very comprehensive, but I think the applicants maybe want to speak to the sewer piece, but-
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Jeff Brown, Princeton Properties.
First of all, to credit Jean, she has put a ton of work into this, and I've permitted it all over the state, and she's to be commended for the amount of work and the attention to detail and the responsiveness, so my hat's off to her, and want to give her and Rebecca some thanks. On this, it's not the best language for us, to be clear. It exposes us to two issues, which kind of started our whole conversation this afternoon, which then morphed into all of this and all this. The most critical issue is that, under this current language, we cannot get an occupancy certificate for any of our buildings until this work gets done. So that became a great concern to us, because, you know, we're going to be going to a bank that will put out millions of dollars of construction fees, and they're going to say, well, their primary collateral, which is the rents that they're to be received, could be held up over something that we have absolutely no control over. We don't control the installation of the pipe repairs and things of that nature. So that's really what started this discussion, and through Jean, and Tim Willett, and Bruce, and some people at the DPW, we really tried to get creative and find a, find an effective solution. And so, that means a lot to us. So, back down to this agreement here and the proposed language, we, we are truly not very comfortable with it. We, it leaves us exposed to the possibility that somehow we're going to create an agreement, and I think everyone has tried to act in good faith. Mr. Willett has attached a memo which referenced in the permit that says DPW will install the pipe, and they will credit the I and I monies to that. So, I guess our answer is relying in good faith on this board, the town, Jean's hard work. We are willing to go forward in good faith that that is going to happen. I don't know if we'll be back here asking for some revision on, on our knees, but we're willing to, I just got off the phone with our CEO, who feels very strongly that everyone here has acted in good faith, and we want to try to do the same. So we're going to accept that language, work with Jean, work with Town Council, DPW, Board of Selectment, and try to formulate a more solid agreement under this, the applicant shall cause. But if it gets to the point where we have to pay I and I fees, and we have to replace the pipe, that's going to be a point that we're going to be standing in front of some board saying, this is an economic disaster and doesn't make any sense. But under the current premise, and under Tim's, Tim and Mr. Willett's memo, it says the opposite, that they will credit the I and I fees towards the repairs, and they will make the repairs, and so we're going to rely upon that memo and the good faith of the board and the town to do the right thing.
It may very well be down the road that, John Smolak, attorney for the applicants, it may very well be that the Selectmen might have to bless something down the road, similar to a development agreement that happens in all other cities and towns, and it's happened in this town in the past, so, so I think we're comfortable, I guess, to, to work that out.
So, Jean, now that we're ready, we don't have anything else we need to keep open. How many hearings do we have open? And you probably should explain all the different decisions before we get started, and what order we should go through the decisions.
Can I just have one second to, with all this, right up to the last minute, I didn't get to look at my notes, and I thought, there are a couple things I want to raise just before you close. Okay, the, the applicants have requested flexibility in the bond rather than cash, possibly either a line of credit or a surety bond. I know we've taken surety bonds in the past. I don't know of a line of credit, but I think it's a viable option.
Whatever is allowed under statute.
Okay.
We like the cash.
The decision references the cash, but, yeah, and I believe by statute, we would be required to take it.
Yeah.
Okay, and just lastly, I have conditioned the sidewalk in the right-of-way along Route 125 to be the responsibility of the applicants through a covenant or some type of maintenance agreement. Jeff today raised the concern that Route 125 sidewalk may be within the right-of-way, which I believe it is, and DOT may have an issue with private ownership slash maintenance. And so, early in the hearing, DPW submitted a letter saying they do not want to have to maintain it. I conditioned that the applicants would, and down the road, it might come back that DOT may have an issue with that. So, I don't know if you want to add language, or should they?
As a simple fact, what we, what we could add is, at the end of, I think it's condition number 34, you could add the sentence, unless Mass DOT assumes such maintenance responsibility.
Well, Mass DOT has said they won't. They'll defer to the municipality. That was the response during the hearing. So, they would defer to the municipality, and their, and DPW's response was, we don't want it. So, I conditioned it on the applicant, so what language we could add-
I think that's something, I, I think you could add John's caveat there, and that's just one of those things we just have to leave open to the future. I mean, it's like, I don't know, you know?
Okay, that's fine.
Speculating things that we don't know for sure what's going to happen.
I agree, and just in the end, snow removal may not occur, I don't, it's in the right-of-way, so. I think that was it, Jeff, unless you remember something I said I would table tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay, so, as far as the permits in front of you, so there's two different applicants, one of which is the residential component and one the commercial. Each require a common driveway special permit, again, primarily for financing reasons, so they're almost identical to each other, but they're separate. The residential permit requires a height waiver, so I have broken-
So let's, let's find these here. So, okay, so there's two, let's see, one, do we have, everybody have two common driveways? Or one?
Two, residential and commercial. So if you look at the applicant, John, one will say Princeton, and one will say Fujetta. And they're both common driveway in the, both at the top of it.
Oh, here, okay, so we've got two common driveways.
And then we have a height waiver for the Princeton applicant, which is only the residential.
Height waiver.
And then we have two site plan, well, they're a combination, site plan, multifamily, and parking reduction for the Princeton Development. And the other one is the commercial, so it's only site plan and parking reduction.
Okay.
And they're combined into one special permit.
And what order should we go through these?
I think the common driveway is easiest to knock it off, then I think the height waiver.
Okay.
And then residential site plan and commercial.
Okay. So, is, would it be easiest just to make a motion that we close all the public hearings related to, or should we do each one separately?
I think you should do them individual.
Okay, now, okay, so, tell me what the first one is.
Common driveway, Princeton Properties.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing on that one?
I'll make a motion to close the common driveway on 1210 Osgood Street, Princeton Properties.
Princeton Development LLC, I'm sorry.
Princeton Development LLC.
Yeah, okay, for the common driveways. So, second, does somebody want a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay.
I'll make a motion, we close the public, oh, are we going to-
We'll do both, no, we go, let's close everything.
Yeah.
There's no public comment here for these applicants, right? Okay, very good.
Let's close them all, so.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing for the common driveway special permit for Fujetta Development LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, on to the third one.
I'll make a motion to close the special permit for Fujetta Development LLC.
Somebody want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And then, we have to do the same for-
I'll make a motion to close the site plan review special permit for 1210 Osgood Street, Princeton Development LLC.
Every second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it, right? Four?
Five.
Is the height waiver, is-
Like that is actually-
There's two site, site plans, right? One for each?
Yep.
And there's two common driveways.
And a, and a height waiver.
Is that a separate permit?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the height waiver special permit for Princeton Development LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
When you said site plan to close it, you included site and multifamily and parking reduction.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so, motion made at second, the height waiver, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, okay. So, let's do the easy ones first.
Jean, was there any material changes to the handout versus, besides the sewer plan?
I, nothing material, but everything that you should have received tonight is in red highlight.
Okay.
So it's in red font, the changes that were made.
Okay.
I think there may have been some minor, minor ones, Lynn, that I didn't remember to do that, but nothing significant.
Are the two common driveways identical? I mean, other than the names being different, or?
The best that I recall, yes. Other than the applicants and the parcel, the locust, John, is a nine, two-nine parcel.
Right, okay, let's do Fujetta first, just so we get aligned here.
Common driveway for Fujetta?
Yeah.
Fujetta. Yeah.
Okay. Ready?
Yep.
Page three, number three, line four, entering or exiting, instead of existing.
Oh, yeah.
Page three, under special conditions, number 11 and number 15, they're redundant, so once, I don't know if we needed them both sections, or, or is it just because of ordering?
Yeah, 11 should come up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Jean, what was the other change before that? I missed it.
On number three, the beginning of this line, fourth line, that says entering or exit, existing, it should be exiting.
Got it, thank you.
On the number 18, the six-line site plan special permit issued of even date, I'm not sure what that means, for the type of, what?
Is there, if it was signed on the same day?
Okay.
Even date, today.
Oh, okay.
They're all signed on the same day.
Okay.
Very good.
I did my homework.
Yes, you did your homework. I'm very impressed, you've earned your pay.
I just have one change related to the A and R. So, when we get to site plan, the A and R, I was going to discuss, the applicants would like to have that endorsed, possibly at the next hearing, maybe not recorded at that time, but I have a condition in that, within 30 days of the expiration date of the permit appeal period. So, they'd like to have it endorsed, so it could be a lot sooner than that.
So remind me again, if my memory fails me, have we actually done the Form A for this already?
No, that's contingent on this all happening.
Yes, okay.
So each locus and each applicant is broken out separate.
Yeah.
To a nine, approximately nine and four and a half.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other comments on the Fujetta common driveway permit? Hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the common driveway special permit for Fujetta Development LLC as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Moving on to the Princeton Development.
I think the changes Lynn made are repeated.
Yep, should be the same. Yes. And I'm going to add the clause unless otherwise permitted on the A and R by the Planning Board.
On page two, permit definitions, item D, please zip code for Lowell.
Yep.
That's a good catch.
Was it the zip code?
I did, too, I just can't-
Yeah.
Chicago schools, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, 1-8-5-1.
Yeah.
1-8-5-1?
Oh, 1-8-5-1.
I'm glad you said that, because I put a four up there.
I thought we had a different. Ah, you're right, one.
On the front page, petition, Princeton Development, Lowell, Mass, oh, 1-8-5-1.
Right, it's correct on the front page, yeah.
Okay, everybody done this one? Want a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the common driveway special permit for Princeton Development LLC as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
I think the height waiver?
Yeah, let's do the height waiver. Yeah. And I know we may not have 100% uniformity of opinion on this, so if we do have comments, we, you know, we should take care of them carefully unless they're clearly editing ours.
So, Jean, on all these, the Xs have been filled in, so we have-
So, November 21. Yep.
The November 21 plan date.
I think I have them all. So, in, in letter B, under the permit definitions, there were XXs on the dates, and very late today, I updated it to 21, so. Your, your version wouldn't have some of the red eye.
And up top, you're approving four, four-story residential garden style, there were Xs there as well.
Where you have to do that.
I reconsider.
So that will be, that's contingent on the board, so.
be within E, not an I.
I do.
Are you guys through, or? So, either we make a motion to approve or recommend a change, however, you know, the thing that was some potential disagreement of opinion, but I'll entertain a motion to approve it as amended, or something different?
Don't we have to have a- A, a motion and a second, any discussion, and at that point, we can make a motion to amend? Isn't that right?
Well, if you want to make a change, this is again, so if you want to, I don't want to do it, but I just, if you want to recommend change, then we can, you know-
I do, I do want to make a motion to modify the main motion, but I thought I had to wait until a-
No, 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 you can do that, you can, you can do that now.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion to modify the main motion to approve a height waiver, special permit for Princeton Development, 1210 Osgood Street, for buildings C, D, and E.
And you want to exclude B?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so, um, so any, before, I know we haven't gotten a second to the motion, but do you want to just explain, you know, the context for that?
Well, it's, it's consistent with the questions I've raised earlier, using the topography to essentially mitigate the impact of the four stories by having the four- topography to essentially mitigate the impact of the four stories by having the four buildings set lower. And I think it's laid out pretty clearly on page three, where we can see the small table that shows the first floor elevation compared to Osgood Street. So each floor in the four-story buildings take about 11 feet. And quite frankly, originally, my concern was both buildings B and C. However, what this table shows is because of the rise of Osgood Street, building C really is set down, taking advantage of the contours, but not so for building B. So we're not, you know, the, the design has not used the topography to really absorb one of the four floors in the case of building B, but it does use the topography to essentially hide one of the four floors on the other three buildings. So that's the reason.
Okay.
And this goes back to the original, you know, assertion of, you know, what the basis for the, for the height waiver would be, which is contained in the minutes of the planning board from the applicant early on, which was to use the contours of this specific site.
Okay. So you're making a motion to make that change. Does anybody want to second that? So then if nobody makes a motion to make that change, then the main motion stays.
Yep.
So, okay, but you're on the record and let the record show that that's the case. So with that in mind, do we want to take a vote on this with, I think it just had some very minor amendments?
The main motion.
Yeah, the, the main motion.
But we didn't know anyone actually made that, just to go.
To, to approve it.
Yeah, well, we have to make it, actually.
Yeah, that's what I mean, nobody made it. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, so would somebody like to make that?
I would approve the height waiver special permit for Princeton Development LLC. It has amended.
There were very minor amendments. I, you know, I was very pedantic, and I had to spend five minutes thinking about it, whether it was even right, so.
Dave, could you include each of the buildings in your motion, though, without each of them?
Oh, for buildings, B for Baker, C for Charlie, D for Dog, and E for Easy.
Yeah, good, okay, so motions made and seconded, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, but so let the record show, it's four to one.
You notice that's WW2, WW2 spelling.
Okay, moving right along.
On page two of that, Jeff referred to the two Xs, I will now edit it to be for four-four-story residential.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, then let's go on to the site plan review reduction in parking for Fergetta Development. Jeez, nine pages, 11 pages, 13 pages, great Scott, that man. Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Same thing on finding of facts, one compliments. So, yeah, compliments. Exactly, they...
She's not paying attention.
The other one is, I always get wrong, is discreet and discreet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Number 11. Fifth line, the project's permanent stormwater.
Oops, sorry. Fifth line. What did you say after that?
The project's permanent stormwater, an extra hour in storm.
Okay.
The caveat in finding of fact five, in caps, is that meant to stay, or is that just sort of for our benefit that...
It's, it's for your benefit, I questioned whether it should be bold or not, and it can come out, but it's, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, no, that's fine. I mean, anything is contingent upon what some higher authority says.
Right, and, and it's also throughout it, that they need to provide those permits to us and submit all applications to us.
Yeah, so.
It's just really important that they get those as part of this development.
Just, I tried to go through it to find where we addressed what would happen if Martha Mastad did not give it through. Because this really says pending approval.
Right.
Is there something in here that says it's got, it's got to happen, or this thing...
For a building permit, they have to give us the approved permits from all depart, all state, local, and federal permits. Now granted, they can give it to us, and if they didn't get that one, then I guess we can embellish that to say, and if any were not supplied to have the traffic light implemented, we could, when we get to that, we can add to it if deemed necessary.
Okay, I, I feel that, you know, without that traffic light, there's problems with this thing.
Well, I think we chose the neighborhood, right?
Yep, yeah. There's a lot of references to it, and if any of them you want to add language to, I'd be happy to do so.
So is finding of fact 15, are the edits to that consistent with the discussion we had at the beginning here?
Yes. Yep, so rather than town, it's changed to applicant.
Okay.
The wood and current is already referenced here, so, and all the conditions are in the permit itself, the decision.
Correct. On 39. And the landscape areas designated as no storage location shall be planted accordingly. Should, to allow, shouldn't we say it should be planted to allow for snow storage or something, instead of accordingly sort of open-ended?
That's verbatim from her email, but I can...
From leases?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, okay, but what do you sug, I don't, I don't understand this.
Shall be planted to allow for snow storage.
Okay. Landscape areas shall be planted.
It might be making it more complicated.
Well, it's sort of like you don't want to over-landscape those areas, that's the whole thing.
That's what she's saying, planted accordingly. Because they're designated for snow storage, they should be planted accordingly to account for the fact that they are designated snow storage.
Okay.
Is my interpretation.
Right, yeah, there you go. Under 40, I just had a question on the snow plowing, because we have it that they can plow two hours prior to opening and four hours after closing. Do we have hours of operation, and is that pretty much, wouldn't if some, if Dunkin' Donuts or our coffee shop opens at 6:00 a.m., that would put them till, allow them to stop plowing at 4:00 a.m., and if something's open till midnight, they can plow four hours that, isn't that 24 hours, depending on what their hour of operations are? I don't know if we have hours of operation.
I don't know who would allow 24 hours, I don't know if that's the board of selection, or does this board allow that?
No, we don't.
I don't think so.
No, we don't allow 24 hours, but if the coffee shop can open at 6:00, they can stop plowing two hours before, and they can plow up to four hours after closing.
I hadn't, I don't ever remember a decision we put in limited hours for snow plowing.
That's what I was wondering, too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like overkill, because if you're going to open stores at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, you may have to go out there at 3:00 in the morning and snow plow, I mean.
I believe it was in one other decision, and the condition was because of the mixed use component, it was trying to account for it.
Ah, yeah.
That's, that's what I thought, and there is residential abutters immediately to the property line.
Okay.
So again, it's a draft, it's viewed and discussed.
Well, that's one, we'll put it in the way it is, and if it doesn't work, that's what I mean, it's, that's where I think we have to have a little bit of flexibility about these things, so.
Unless you put in, in no event should there be snow plowing between the hours of something to something, how else are you going to control it?
It's kind of, I wouldn't want to create a liability issue either, you know.
Right, well, that's the whole thing, it's sort of, but what hours would they, do we, who sets the hours of operation? Any idea? Anybody?
No, I can't.
I don't think they still.
We'll just ignore this one, anyway.
Okay, I thought of that, but I, I wanted to cover it.
When under special conditions, item 30, the applicant shall fi, shall file with DOT. But I think we have to have something that says that the permit for the traffic light must be granted. Who pays for that traffic light, by the way?
I do.
How do you do?
You do. So.
Okay, so 30 is talking about the requirements associated with the airport.
Yeah, no, 30...
31 is the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Shall meet...
I'm sorry, 31, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right. And they have to, 33 is they have to supply us copies of these.
Well, it said they must meet all DOT requirements, but it doesn't say anything about the traffic light and...
I think it says it's 64.
Yeah, trying to find what number it is. So 60, no, that's NEPA. So 65 is a copy of all local, state, and federal permits required for this project shall be submitted. Now, the, the traffic light is required for the project, but I guess it...
Well, we don't say that.
I want... We do.
Required or...
It's part of conceptual plan on Osgood Street. So where's that one?
I think that is under 64, the condition of the permit. Why talk, you improve mass deals to permit? I'm reading 64 correctly.
Are you on the commercial one, or the...
Yeah.
I got the 64.
We spent a lot of time on this.
A through E. Based on the results of the signal warrant analysis in section at the, quote, site drive, signal at the intersection, exclusive left turn lane, right turn lane, all that's in there.
As a finding effect.
Yeah, so they don't, and it's also on their plan, so we have it in there. I think that's the question.
Yeah, this should not, this should be different.
True. So we move that down to...
Which one?
We can have a place, right?
Five, but we move five down into a condition.
Well, there are a lot of five in finding of facts, it's just a reiteration of the facts.
That's what I was...
So where's the... Yeah, I mean, I'd still keep that there, because I think it's...
Okay, yeah, copy that down into...
You could say if there are things remaining to do, just be done in accordance with the traffic plan, I guess, yeah.
Okay, so number 33, the applicant must supply a copy of approved mass DOT permits necessary for access and construction of the site to the planning department in the event that mass DOT requires material changes deemed by the planning director in the access egress of all details depicted on the plans and/or Osgood Street conceptual improvement plan dated July 25th. And that's the one that Jeffrey Dirk showed us, and it showed Osgood Street, and it had different colors for the lights, which ones were blinking versus stoplights. The applicant shall submit revised plans to be reviewed by the board in accordance with the process in 838, which is revisions to an approved site plan. So that's under a special condition, it kind of goes with the entire permit. So...
Okay.
Okay? I know how, I know how important that one was.
Nothing happens to you.
No, I, obviously, that is a really important component of this, and I want to, I mean, if you think it needs to be said again elsewhere, or before some type of endorsement or building permit or CO, I can move it, but I tied in that conceptual plan, you only saw it once, and it's really a pretty informal plan, but...
Okay, but the, sorry. But is the conceptual plan, does it incorporate the traffic studies submitted?
It's, it's pretty much a reflection of that traffic study, yes.
Okay.
It shows the curve across the street, on Barker Street, it shows the, the turning lanes.
And the light.
It would feel better if you could add in there for the turning lanes and the traffic light after that, somewhere in that person.
As the items referenced in finding of fact 5A.
I could do that.
Yeah, okay, fine.
I could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't get to 100. Add three more conditions, so we can end up with a hundred.
I thought about taking some out, to be honest, I've never seen one that hard.
76A, applicant's problem.
Thanks, Laura.
Good, well, that's good, it's important you get your, I had actually a question, 81, the one about the retaining walls, is there a one form earlier in the thing that sort of says they'll submit their plans for the walls to us? I just don't remember, I don't feel like going back.
I don't think there is, and at building permit time, they're required to show a structural analysis at building...
That's what I mean, is that in there?
I don't believe so.
We should put that in there. Yeah, I tried to get to 100.
Right, right, it's part of building code, so I know they're coming in with the building permit application, but we can put it in.
Well, maybe just put that in as part of it.
That's fine.
I just, retaining walls always stick out as something that we just need to make sure it doesn't slip through the cracks.
58, is still the fact of conclusion from our earlier discussion of what form the board, the bond would be in?
No, so, I've got to that. So I think I have it as a cash bond. The bond should be in the form of a check made out to the town of the end over, so an acceptable form.
Per statute.
Yeah, yeah, so move more per statute. Can have Rick Dardella come back and give a lecture on surety bonds, I didn't like them, so. Okay, is everybody done? This is awesome, by the way.
Okay, can I just go through my edits?
Yeah.
May or may not want to be addressed. So, a couple of things, on the, number 13, I carried the school analysis from the residential to the commercial, and it doesn't really apply to the commercial, so 13, finding of fact, I don't think it's very necessary, and so John, I'm going in the other direction to bring them down. Okay, because this is the commercial, and it is in the residential. The project under definition number 26, I have approximately $40,000, but the final plan is more approximate to $43,000, you want me to update that? In 29, the 7.4, to be more specific, is .4, .6, and that's what was added at town meeting time. The sidewalk on 34, I don't want, I don't know if you want to add language there unless mass DOT assumes such maintenance, or just let it go, John, one or the other, that's...
I'll put it in there, it's just no harm.
Okay. And again, the A and R piece that I said, unless it's approved otherwise by the planning board, for my condition. unless it's approved otherwise by the planning board, for my condition. Yeah, so it's understood on the signage. The commercial component will have a conceptual plan brought back to the board. I didn't include that in residential, but this is just reminding me of it, so...
Probably worth putting in both, because I think part of it is how the signing's going to interplay on the site, so we will probably have to have a vote.
Okay, and we have in both that it has to be zoning, but obviously, if they go get a variance from zoning, that's approved, right? You don't need to state that.
Yeah. Okay. Just have to do.
Can I just ask about the surety bond? Was the intent forty for each property, or forty cumulative? Because we have twenty.
I had forty for each. Unless the board thinks otherwise. I compared it to Brightview, and Brightview required a forty thousand dollar bond for one site.
It's, yeah.
It's performance bond, so if they want to come in and ask for a reduction after some point in time, I'm sure you'll be available to that, but...
Yeah, well, that's fine. It's a lot less than, obviously, subdivisions and things like that.
And if the surety is accepted, then it's not a forty thousand dollar cash bond either.
Understood.
Okay. Anything else, Jean?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion for Jeddah Development, the site plan review and reduction in parking, special permits, permit?
Move, we approve the site plan review and reduction in parking, special permits for Jeddah Development LLC, the residential portion.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Onto the... Does it basically clone, or are there a few things? Like, the ones you mentioned?
The ones I mentioned. Did I say this? We'll come on here. Okay, they're primarily the same.
Okay. So anything that we've made for the other one? Jean should carry over to this one.
So you're going to put signage forty-two and forty-three from the commercial of this one, correct?
Right, so as far as different, there's permit definitions are obviously different. The site is now the nine point two-nine acre parcel, once the...
Right, and I noticed defining the fact, you did a couple of them that were different.
Yes, and you can't put them side by side in that job, because...
Right.
I had a... Just a question on item thirty-four, maintenance of the sidewalk out in front.
Yeah.
You say maintained by the project owner. I meant to check this earlier. Is the project owner defined as the continuing, operating...
Yeah, so if you look at the permit definitions?
Yeah, that's...
In all our permits. I can look at a combination of, yeah, twenty-eight, and the applicant is referring to the specific applicant today. It should be twenty-eight.
Okay. Will the two properties, when they're combined into one, be operated as a terms of maintenance and snowballing?
Part of the agreement has cross easements that'll cover a lot of that for joint contribution. Princeton is also a property management company, so will manage the entire property and commercial as well.
But the cross easements are still required in the document, because in the future, it could be any owner, and there'll be two separate identified parcels in the end.
I really like that, those conditions. Those are some of the best ones, I think, because it is a complex situation here, so...
So then, the sidewalk will have to be maintained by either or, because it's going to be in both decisions.
Right. The sidewalk along Osgood Street, again, maybe further, and I'm going to do the same edit on that, add the mass DOT component we just talked about on that edit. On this one, on thirty-five, I wrote my note here, and again, should have wrote it on both, but the sewer pump station is actually on the residential component, and they'll be required to have that maintained and the emergency plan in the event it breaks for a certain period of time. I know you've just closed the other one. I had it there. Is it okay to amend that one, to take that one out of the commercial? If it's not, it's not, but...
The only thing is, I guess, I hadn't really thought of it one way or the other.
The alternative is the agreement would say, except for the sewer pump, like in these documents of cross easements and maintenance agreements and whatnot. They can call it out to the reverse.
Well, as long as it's... I mean, the important thing is documented in the easements and cross easements, I guess, who's responsible for what, so...
So their language could override that in thirty-five by saying it is the responsibility of the residential.
I agree, and part of the agreement says that the town will have a role in overseeing the cross easements, approving them. Town council will be involved as well, so it'll be very thorough.
Yes, so I have a condition in that drafts get sent to us at a certain period of time, and then, before they get recorded, that we approve them again.
We just don't want any of these. I mean, it's kind of like where you have a, you know... If I can give an example of, like, a project that I'm working on now, where we're going to outsource something, and you lay out the responsibilities of each party, because you want to make sure there's no ambiguity. So as long as the responsibilities are delineated, then we should be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Plus, they'll be recorded, so, as you say, download road. Property interest may change.
Are we going to add in the language about the traffic light and whatever into this one, too? Like, move it in?
Yeah.
Because either or, because they both have...
Reference finding a fact five, so, yeah.
Special condition.
Bill, through?
Yes.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion for Princeton Development's site plan review?
Hold me one second. Just give me one second, yeah. It's hard to keep up. The school stays in that one. John? Again, the A and R piece I will add, unless otherwise authorized by the planning board.
Can we add in that they can't come back next week with the A and R? We have to see them again? Come on, it gives me a break.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Can I? So the new seventy-four that came out, that's going to go in the red line that you gave me? Okay.
That's what the board has reviewed, so...
Can I ask, consistent with that the applicant shall cause in B, the applicant shall cause permits to be obtained, I need that cause to remain consistent, because otherwise, this says we have to get the permits, where before it says we can cause this to be done, as we hope to, through an agreement with DPW. So in B...
What number are we at?
We have seventy-four.
So it would be the applicant shall cause any and all required permits for replacement...
So you just want to change "obtained" to "cause"?
Yes. You can add "obtained" at the end. Shall cause any and all required permits for the replacement of the two pipe segments.
Be obtained.
To be obtained.
I don't have any objection to that, but the fact that it's not in the commercial one?
Do that, too. It's okay.
Do that, too. Thank you.
Okay.
And is that only B, or... Yeah, and I don't think it applies to C. And it may apply to A, but the DPW could be the ones turning it in, but I think it's okay.
Can we do it in C as well, I think, John? Because otherwise, this would have us paying for the the pipe replacement, where the intent is to have it credited through the INI.
Again...
But isn't that paying it, whether you get a credit or whether you...
On that one, I...
I think the idea here is that if... We could conceivably have to pay the INI, and then there's another approximately seventy thousand dollars to replace these pipes. That's what the cost is approximating.
But why don't you just write in, then it might be offset by the...
I think that was part of Jean's concern.
We can't appropriate the funds. I think it's okay. All the discussions to date have been, the DPW is going to work with them to accomplish that, but they... Between them and the town manager, they have the authority, not the board, to appropriate funds. So I just want to caution that you don't appropriate funds in your language.
Yeah, okay. So anyone want to make a motion now?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review, multifamily housing, reduction in parking, special permit for Princeton Development LLC as amended.
Motion made and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for all your time.
Again, thanks to Jean and you, we're pretty used together, and thanks for...
Gina and Rebecca are awesome. We're working on a job.
We didn't make a hundred conditions. We'll end up ninety-six.
I went back with them.
Must be a record. Thank you again.
I don't know, we need to be coming back next month.
Next time, really quick.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Say goodnight. Okay, going to the next one. It's all the way down to Chestnut Green.
Yes.
Can you give us a synopsis of this? Somehow this sounds a little familiar.
Should be very familiar.
Yeah.
So Rebecca's going to tee this up and go through this application.
Okay.
And the applicant's request, site plan review, for a special permit to construct nine parking spaces located at the end of Hillside Road. This was brought before the board for a request of a waiver at a previous public hearing. We have circulated the application to all the appropriate departments. Fire has reviewed and submitted comments that they don't believe that this will impede upon their upon their response to the complex, and actually, the roadway easement that's in existence at this particular site is actually not sufficient enough for their fire trucks. Building reviewed the parking plan and has commented that there is actually not sufficient parking at this site currently, so is in favor of any additional parking. DPW has also commented that the proposed project does not present any issues. However, their one comment specifically was that the roadway easement is actually not... It's not recorded at the registry of deeds, so there's no conceptual rights for the town to use that roadway easement. So they ask that if you are going to address it, that they actually get the deeded easement. The plan has also gone through stormwater review, and the consultant has no problem with the design. However, the one comment she made is in terms of maintenance of the porous pavement, and asked that that be conditioned in terms of seal coating and surfaces be prohibited. Otherwise, we have included information in your packet concerning some of the previous dealings with this particular site and the request to use that particular location. And the applicant's engineer, Mr. Stupinski, is here to represent Chestnut Green.
What happened the last time?
The last time, they came before the board for a waiver request, and it was by the board that they need to go through notifying a butters of this potential change, as well as getting stormwater review of the site. And there was question in regards to whether or not they were impeded upon the roadway easement that was shown on the site plan.
I can remember looking at that parking area. I recall that there was a house...
Why don't we let the applicant present, and then we can go from there?
There has also been a lot of butters response, and a few of them are here tonight to voice their comments as well.
Okay, great. That's good to know. Okay. It's all yours. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For your record, my name is Steve Stupinski from MRMAC Engineering. I think the board members are correct. If you recall, we came before the board requesting a waiver for site plan approval to construct nine parking spaces at the Chestnut Green site at the end of Hillside Road. And the board decided that a waiver was not appropriate, and that we should go through a full site plan review. And again, as Rebecca had said, the issue, I think, was stormwater drainage, as well as access for emergency vehicles and those types of things. You have the plan up on your wall. I brought kind of an old-fashioned colored rendering that I did this morning. And essentially, this shaded area that you see is the paved area of the roadway. And a portion of the roadway that's paved is on the Chestnut Green property. Now, some of you have been in town for a long time, and you probably remember when Hillside Road went all the way through to Route 114. I remember it. In one year, I think there were ten major accidents there. I think there were several fatal accidents in one particular year. And as a result, the Mass Highway came to the town and said, "Look, we'd like to see you shut off Hillside Road, and we're willing to pay for it." And of course, the selectmen did. They closed Hillside Road at 114. They put a guardrail across it, and they removed the pavement and planted grass. And they did so before Chestnut Green was built, right before it was built. This used to be Fellowship Bible Church. One time, it was also Joe Negreli, who owned Advanced Reproductions across the street, which is now, like, a gym in Salem Five, et cetera. But Negreli sold it to the church. The church was going to develop this for some purpose. They ended up selling it to the Chestnut Green developers, and they did so right after the town built the turnaround onto the Chestnut Green property. But I think the idea always was that the town was going to have the county engineers go ahead and develop an easement for the turnaround. I have a copy of the plan that the county engineers did, but in fact, the easement was never taken by the selectmen. It never went to town meeting, so they never took it. The church never granted it to the town. The Chestnut Green developers went ahead and built the development, and we showed on the plans for the development, the proposed roadway easement. It was never conveyed by them. So basically, the town has a turnaround on the Chestnut Green property that they plow and that they use, and the public uses, for turning around. And there's no easement or right-of-way of wrecked. And there's no easement or right-of-way of record to the town. What we're proposing to do is to use the turnaround that's on the Chestnut Green property and build nine additional parking spaces on their property. The parking spaces would begin at the edge of the existing pavement. So if you had a fire truck or a police car or anybody's car, UPS van that came down Hillside Road and turned around, they would do so in the existing pavement. You'll still be able to do that because our parking spaces will not inhibit that. Our parking spaces begin at the edge of that pavement, which is also the edge of that proposed easement, which never got conveyed to the town. In doing the nine spaces, the association is going to have to relocate some walkways and will have to build a small landscape retaining wall in front of the spaces. But essentially, the idea is that most of the, the units within Chestnut Green are now medical uses. This is turned into more of a medical facility than a general office building, and that's what it was originally permitted for, but medical was always allowed, but never anticipated to be as intense as it is, I guess. And so the idea is that right now, people who come to visit their doctors and whatever, there's no parking. They park in the fire lanes. They double park, blocking cars. The emergency vehicles have a very difficult time traversing the site. And because of the wetlands that are on the property, there's really not a lot of opportunity to build spaces anywhere else except in the landscape end areas, which, and even then, that would inhibit the traffic flow. So the thought is by the association that if they built these nine spaces, they could be dedicated to people who work there during the day. They would park, long-term parkers, that would open up nine spaces for people who are more transient in nature. Because they're people who would work there during the day, they don't necessarily need to be lit. And at night, those paved areas would become available to provide additional turning radius for emergency vehicles that might have to respond in the evening to a fire or to one of butters property or something like that. So essentially, it provides a sort of a larger turning radius, if you might say, at night when the spaces aren't occupied. You say, "Well, how do we know they won't be occupied at night?" Well, the idea is if you go to Chestnut Green after six o'clock, you'll see that the parking, or after six-thirty, maybe, you'll see that the parking demand certainly is not as intense as it is at two o'clock or four o'clock when everybody's visiting their doctor. So people would need to park there. They would just park literally within the facility. So really, that's, that's about it. I think the concern was that we're going to be increasing the runoff and so we're proposing porous pavement. I know your consultants reviewed that and she's agreed there'd be no increase in the runoff to the area because we're not lighting it. I don't think there's any negative impacts to the butters. And I think that the question has come up, would Chestnut Green Board be willing to convey the easement to the town? And I think that that would certainly be a stipulation of your approval if you granted site plan approval. I think we would all expect that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, certainly the butters as well.
I'm confused about, does everybody have the package with Mark Reese's letter with the zoning variance in the package?
Is it short? Why don't you read that?
Okay, November sixteen, two thousand. The closed document, documentation reveals that Chestnut Green Development met the parking requirements at the time of construction. The Newport Group Incorporated corresponded dated December fifteenth, nineteen eighty-six in paragraph one states, "While the project was approved prior to site plan review process, it would exceed its requirements presented today." In paragraph number two states, "As been our experience in developing similar project in Needham, Norwood, Danvers and Peabody, that a parking ratio of three and three and a half parking spaces per thousand feet of net building area is sufficient to accommodate the requirements of the building even when medical use is prevalent. To the best of my knowledge, the North Andover bylaw in effect during that period required three spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, GFA. Relief of eighteen feet from fifty feet setback along Route 114 Turnpike Street was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on petition number forty-three dash eighty-nine dated nineteen, April nineteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. The variance as granted allowed for a parking of approximately thirty-seven additional vehicles. In addition, please find enclosed via reference a copy of my memorandum dated October sixth, two thousand. If you have any questions or further assistance, please call me at nine seven eight six eight eight nine five four five." So the ZBA gave you a setback variance, which already gave you thirty-seven additional vehicles. Correct for this property?
Yes.
Okay. And then that allowed you to build the extra building because she said you'd have enough parking, correct? Is that how it happened?
I believe that's what the architect and developer said, yeah.
So just want to make sure that the history, because there's also the parking requirements is documented, that they already got a ZBA variance that allowed them to build more parking spaces and then they crammed it in another building.
Right. Just to sort of take you through that, and again, the board members might not all fully require, remember that the town had a bylaw that didn't permit development within a hundred feet of Route 114. So it was literally a hundred-foot setback from the property line of Route 114 to any buildings. And I think the way the bylaw was written is while it inhibited parking because parking was considered accessory to the building at the time by the building inspector and all the board. I'm going back quite a ways when I was a lot younger. And so when you developed along 114 before the zoning was changed, you had to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance to build within that hundred-foot setback. So I think, you know, you had a variance for that that was granted. And then I think variances were granted, I think, for the third building as well as kind of how it worked. I didn't do that. I think the architect was Joe LaGrasse, his office. So I wasn't really involved with that. I did the site permitting, but not the variances. Pete, any questions? And I would say that, I mean, I was out here looking for spaces, looking for places to put spaces and really, there aren't a lot of places to put the spaces. There's, if you look at the plan, you say, gee, you've got landscaped areas, you know, in front of the buildings. You should be able to make the, you know, double up the parking lot, but physically, there's just not enough dimension. If you took the landscaped areas in front of both buildings and you said, "Well, I'm going to put parking in there, try to build an extra parking lane," just physically you can't because there's only enough room for the, literally, the driveway and then you wouldn't be able to put any other parking. So just geometrically, there's no way to fit parking that's compliant or even non-compliant for that matter and have the driveway plus the spaces. No place else on the site to do it. So basically, that's about it. And again, the intensity of use being so much medical certainly is a lot different than I think what they were talking about in Danvers where there was, there was a mix, but it wasn't as intense as this is. This is very intense. But again, I think, you know, if you go out there and just, you can sit there for twenty minutes on an afternoon, typical day, and you'll see it. And this is why, you know, public safety issues have been, have been raised. Well, can we, can, we just, we're going to go to the board first, then we'll let you ask as many questions as you like. Do you have any questions, Pete? Laura? Okay.
I used to have to see my dentist there and, yeah, parking was impossible. But did I understand that we granted space for more parking?
There's been two grants, yeah.
And then they crammed a building, another building in?
Yeah, and I think if it happened today, we wouldn't have allowed buildings as big as what got built there, so.
I think, I think what happened here is that when the buildings were built, you had office use that was allowed by right. You had medical use that was allowed by right and there was no mechanism to regulate the use when you have a change of use for parking. I don't know if I've said this right, but if you have a, if you have a lawyer's office, for example, if everybody was a lawyer in this complex, you probably wouldn't have the parking demand that you have. And the three spaces per thousand square feet would probably be adequate. That's the general office requirement that you have in your bylaw. And if this was being built as a medical complex, it would be four and a half spaces per thousand in your bylaw. So, you know, there was no mechanism at the time to regulate that use. So when the building, someone came in and said, "I'm going to open a dentist's office," the building inspector would give the permit to renovate the building and put in the dentist's office because there was no mechanism to cause anybody to go back for site plan approval because it was a general use that was allowed in that zone. Whereas I think now you would probably write an approval that would be considerate of that fact. And say if you're going to change from a lawyer's office, for example, to a dentist's office, you would have to comply with the, show compliance with the parking requirement. I would think that's what you'd do. And that's the lesson that you learn here. Okay, good. Well, we do have a butters here, so if anybody wants to come up, if you come up, actually, it would be more convenient if you come up to this mic, identify who you are and ask your question and we'll try to get you an answer.
Mark, I've risen into Hillside Road. I couldn't understand how the construction was going to be. You had the plans turned facing the members here, so could you? I know there is an existing, almost like a walkway and could you show me yours with the colors, please? So I want to know how far the parking lots are going to stick out into the exist, there's a paved area. I'm trying to understand where the parking lots and what changes are you going to make? Because there is a walkway. Is this it here?
Is there any way, yeah, somehow so we can all sort of see? I know it's a little bit of a problem. Can we make it a little bit bigger? The one on the right, maybe if we make that a little bigger, that would, yeah, that, I think make that. The solemn line, the solemn line that you see at the end of the dots is where the pavement is now.
Right.
So the cars won't stick out into that paved area at all. The cars are going to go into the area that's beyond the existing pavement that's currently landscaped. The walkway, which kind of goes straight through, you can see it running right over to the, to the brick patio, I guess, at the top of the stairs, right, right there. That walkway is going to be relocated to be closer to the building.
Okay.
And there'll be a two to three-foot-high landscape retaining wall built there and the, and the walk moved closer to the building. I don't know what else to say. That's how it would be. So the cars wouldn't stick out beyond the pavement. Cars will be totally, I guess you'd call them enclosed or totally in the landscaped area right now. If you look at where the sidewalk is right now, part of the car would be on the existing sidewalk. I guess that's the best way to put it. And sidewalks will move closer to the building.
Okay. How about floodlights? I know you've touched on that point.
Sorry, the what?
How about lighting? Are there going to be bright lights at night? I think you might have touched on that point.
Lights. You said there were no lights, right? We're not proposing to light it. There's a, I think there's, there's lighting on Hillside Road right now and there's lighting on the site right now. And there'll be no additional lighting that would be built here for these spaces.
As planned now.
What's that?
As planned today.
As planned today and as the plan is. And I think, you know-
Wouldn't you be required to put in lighting?
I wouldn't want any more lighting.
No, I understand, but I think code requires you to put in lighting.
I think there's already, that area's already lit. It's probably lit to an adequate level, but we're not going to intensify it. If we put more lighting in, it would intensify it and bring it to a higher level. There's no need to use the spaces at night. The intention is that employees who are here longer term during the day use them.
Except that we've got about three or four months of the year when it gets dark before six o'clock.
Again, the area is already lit and-
There is street lighting.
There's street lighting there. The cul-de-sac's lit. The landscaped area is currently lit. There's adequate lighting for it. We don't need, it was our opinion that we didn't need to intensify it. I went out there, you can make it bright, you know, like this, or you can leave it, you know, to be adequate.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question of the, so do you find that people park in that area now? Do they use that spot illegally, no legally, but improperly?
I can't comment. I'm not there during the day. I leave in early in the morning and get home late at night, so I'm not-
Yeah, why don't you come on up?
This is an important consideration.
It is very, yes, yes.
It's being used improperly and we can make it better.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
I'm Craig Burns. I live at two thirty-four Hillside Road. But I am right outside. I am in the circle. I'm in the second last house. And yes, it's constantly used illegally. There's, there's all kinds of trucks that come and go that sit there, people waiting to pick up, people sit there because they want to get as close to the building as possible. And one of my concerns is, I think it was twelve or thirteen years ago, they took down the whole buffer between the neighborhood and the parking lot, took down twenty years' worth of growth to put in two or three parking spots.
Where is that? Can you, can you see that on the plan here?
That's-
Or maybe make it smaller again for a quick second, yeah?
It's where, there's a dumpster there now. I can't, yeah, right there?
Yeah, right along there.
So it's right along Hillside Road, the buffer between the neighborhood and Chestnut Green. Again, I think it was like two thousand and four, we just saw them taking out all the trees. We were like, what is going on?
And they added those parking spaces the other time?
They added a few parking spaces. They thought they were going to add more, but that's where the Verizon boxes all are. The Verizon trucks come there all the time too, which is another variable. There's always Verizon trucks around there. And part of the area, I've been there nineteen years, it is so congested because everyone uses that as a street also. That's a, I think, a big variable. They cut from 114 to get to 125, so it kind of makes the appearance like it is even more congested than it is. Because also, I think in the last ten years, it's gotten less congested as far as parking. They used to park in our neighborhood, along Buckland Road. They used to park up and down Hillside. And actually, in the last ten years, I've seen a lot less of that. But there's always UPS trucks and-
So what do you think people cut through? They go into their Chestnut Green parking lot, then pull out in Hillside and go over?
It's like a regular roadway because after six o'clock in our weekends, it's like a regular traffic pattern. We've seen people try to pass each other there. It's, it's kind of comical, but it's dangerous because there's a lot of kids in our neighborhood.
No, no, I mean, that's a police issue. I mean, it's, it's all illegal driving. It's just a question whether the law-
Yeah, I mean-
But I mean, you've dealt with it longer and you've probably talked to them many times.
Right.
But do you, do you think that this would be helpful?
No, actually, I've had my, because I'm right there and I've had my fence knocked down twice. I've had my mailbox knocked down. We had a basketball net that was hit by a vehicle. The net attached to the trailer hitch and it was dragged down 125.
But the question is- But, but the question is whether if they moved the spots in closer to the building, would it make it better for the roadway? You're not gonna prevent the illegal parking?
Sure, right, right.
Well, you might, but, but not us. Well, but that's not...
Yeah, they, I don't know, it's, it's hard to say, but everyone's always, that, I get just concerned that it's now getting closer and closer to the neighborhood, where, at least before, they were in this separate zone, because now there's no buffer, too. There's, and where those cars are, they're maybe 30 feet from my driveway, so now we gotta watch out for cars backing in and out.
Are there no parking signs on Hillside Road?
Yeah, there are, there are no parking signs in the whole circle, of which there was an issue years ago with that.
Going back there?
You can park along Hillside legally, yes. Yep. And you can even park in, on Buckland Road. We've had people park like right in front of our house, and, you know, nice people going over for an appointment, and we have no issue with that. But the, the other issue is a snow issue. They've dumped, I've had to run out there countless times to say, "You can't, you're pushing all your snow onto my property." And they've damaged trees doing that, and so then it becomes, the town thinks the Chestnut Green property management is supposed to plow in front of our house, and then I think the Chestnut Green people think the town is supposed to do it, so we get kinda lost in there, too. There ends up being like an island of snow that our mail, I have to shovel out about 10 to 15 feet just to get our mail.
There is a, where is it?
It's hit or miss sometimes, depending on the guy.
There's, there's a general condition where you are that you can't necessarily solve. I mean, it's just one of those things, perhaps if we had all gone back sort of 50 years in time, we could've constructed a better answer. So I think to Laura's point is that maybe this is the best solution, at least, it's the best of a bunch of bad alternatives, let's put it this way. Is it, is it gonna be, make it better than what we have today, or worse than what we have today? And that's really what we have to decide, I think.
Sure.
And what, and what do you think?
I, I think bringing a parking lot into that circle is not a good idea. I just think it's gonna make that area more congested.
Do people park there now?
They do not, there's enough no parking signs there now. They actually had no parking signs, and then somebody in Chestnut Green cut them down at one point, and then they came back and said, "You can't cut no parking signs down," and they put them back up. But there's always medical vehicles that are dropping off and picking up...
And regular cars, too. There's cars parked down all the time.
Okay, if you...
Can you say that, please?
Yeah, if you...
Can you say that?
Sure, yeah, there are cars that, a lot of, there's a lot of waiting cars there, a lot of idling cars waiting for people, and people kinda just lingering and hanging around there, waiting for people. You see that a lot. You see like office supply trucks.
Which, this is gonna push that congestion somewhere else.
Because they're doing it because it's the one spot on that property where you can sort of park temporarily without...
Right.
Could, you know, impeding traffic.
Right.
And if there were parking there, it would be much harder for them to do that, wouldn't it?
It would be harder to park behind them, on the street, right? You would create parking, and it would almost...
Create a barrier.
No, I understand what you're saying.
I don't know.
Now, all those waiting vehicles are gonna be pushed elsewhere and be sitting along, if they cannot temporarily park there for, because cars are parked there, now all those vehicles are going everywhere else.
Is it possible to the applicant, you make it like 15-minute parking?
That may be worse, if there's always cars parking, pulling in and out. My name is Jill Burns, and I also live at 234 Hillside Road, and the comment that I was gonna make is, one of the most frequently waiting vehicles there is a, a van that transports, I'm not sure if it's elderly people, and they kind of like drop them off and, and sit there and wait for them, and so there's, very frequently, there's a van sitting in that circle, so I'm not sure where that van would end up, whether they, it would just sit and block in those, those vehicles if they're gonna be...
And move if necessary, and be just congesting that area. That's what our concern is.
I just wanna make sure I understand from the applicant here.
The, the parking spaces would go in the area that's currently lawn, is that correct?
Currently landscaped.
Landscaped, okay.
Yeah, that's a big, there's a lot of grass there.
And would, would not extend into the area that's currently paved.
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess my question, just, I mean, I wanna understand your concern, if, if the cars were, if the parking lots were put, the parking spaces were put in where it's currently landscaped, it would not put any cars on the area that's currently paved?
Sure.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't create parking spaces where it's currently paved, but because cars would now be able to park, I think you're probably right, that it would make it less possible for other vehicles...
Right.
To be loitering there.
Right, if it provided some consistency.
Well, because they, they can't be blocking a car, and every time someone comes out, they'd have to move.
I agree.
And wouldn't that tend to push those loitering, loitering cars into the, the large rectangular parking lots, which is away from the residential area?
Theoretically, yes.
To another entrance.
Sure.
I, I mean, I'm wondering if these parking spots would actually create some relief by pushing the loitering cars away from the neighborhood?
Yes, I mean, that would, that'd be what we were, we're looking for.
I think...
Well, I was gonna say, one thing that this gentleman said that made me feel a little bit better was, if these were designated spots, I would feel a lot better, because otherwise, people are gonna be zooming in, looking for those spots, and...
I see.
Circling around, and...
Right.
Where is your snow storage on the site? Because looking at this, I don't think you have any, do you? So you're gonna be taking away the last, probably square foot of snow storage you have?
The snow is, is that? The, the snow is pushed to the back of the, each of the parking lots, so very close to and adjacent to the wetlands, and into landscaped areas that are adjacent to the buildings and the long 114 that don't have major shrubbery in it, so that's typically where it is right now. I think after, you have several intense snowstorms, the piles are so big, they're put into spaces sometimes, and then one or two days after the storm, they're removed.
Your wetland marker line, is that, is that 100 foot? Is that the line that goes pretty much, traces the building outline? Because on your...
That's not the, that's, I don't think, that's not the 100-foot buffer, that's the, that's the actual wetland line.
Okay, so then actually, you can't even push it to the end of the parking spaces?
Like, they push it beyond the spaces into that area.
Into the wetland.
It goes from the pavement to the wetlands is literally grass.
Okay.
So it's, there's snow storage that is used literally in the 25-foot zone. Normally, you know, that would be prohibited today, right? The 25-foot?
It is, yeah, it is prohibited, you know?
Right. But that's where the snow storage is now, physically. Wasn't prohibited when the order was issued for the site.
Good, can I ask another question?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, if you cut the parking spaces in the area that's currently, currently landscaped...
Does that mean you also have to remove trees? Because I see a couple trees there.
Um, yes, there'll be, there'll be shrubbing, smaller trees removal, that's right.
Because it looks like there's a couple mature trees there.
There's no, no big mature trees will have to be removed for it, no.
So if this went through site plan review now, they'd need landscaping buffers between properties, they would need certain distances for parking between the wetlands, they'd need screening, parking lot screening and all that stuff. They're taking away every single little bit of landscaping they have, pretty much.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the problem ends up being is that it did come before the age of site plan review, and that's just, you know, I think a lot of things would've been different if, if it had been done today. It's not that we do such a great job, but you just learn from your experience.
Well, exactly. Or, are we making better, are we making this situation better, or are we making it worse?
Well, I think that's the question that Pete asked, and I think he could make an argument that it, it makes it potentially a little bit better, but let's, yes, please, come on up.
My name is John King.
You could use the bike, you can actually stand if you like.
My name is John King. I own the house, that's 591 Turnpike, it's right at the edge of the closed road and right on Turnpike on that corner. So I, I don't live there, I rent out the house, but I'm there periodically from time to time, different times, and it's easier for me to drive into the property through, between the guardrail and the telephone pole, to go in, do some work on the house and, and leave. So that's what I've been doing, and I've noticed, it's not a big enough turnaround to begin with. I can't believe a fire truck can turn around. When I'm turning, when I'm making the swing with my truck, if I'm not driving in, it's, it's tight, and I have a, just a Ford cargo van. But I don't know what the dimensions are of the circle. I think some towns require like a 50-foot diameter, Rebecca might know. Is there a subdivision requirement? I know this is not a subdivision, but what's the turning, is there a turning radius for...
You're right, it doesn't sort of fall within that scope, because it's, it was, it is what it is, and so I guess, tie the thread together how wide it is to what you think we should do.
If the cars are allowed to park there and he pushes back, the landscaping, you know, diminishes some of the buffer between the residential and the business. It might not, it, it's not gonna improve for a turning, turning around, because I don't think there's enough space right now to turn around, to do a circle turn. You have to do a three-point turn, at least on larger vehicles. There's, would be an issue with drainage, I would, I would consider.
A consultant already looked at it, so they're satisfied themselves, and they're pretty rigorous, so, I mean...
Yeah, but if they word it correctly, if they, I didn't read anything on the consultant report for drainage, but there's a drainage opening that's deteriorated right on the opposite end of Hillside, where my property begins at that corner, and the town hasn't done anything with it. You get a lot of runoff from Turnpike and, you know, coming down the driveway and through the yard, and it's, because the low end is right there at, at Hillside.
Right, again, though, that's a general condition.
Yeah.
And not specifically what we're, we're here for, but fair enough. I mean, there's some general things that probably should be...
The other thing was, the additional nine spots should have some snow storage. They just pile up the snow right at the guardrail. It would make it easier for the snow, for the town to even plow, if they pushed the guardrail back and created some town snow storage, unless they're comfortable pushing it over the guardrail. So that could be a consideration there. If they kinda, if they're allowed to do the parking, maybe push the guardrail back, pave a little bit more area that would be in front of the guardrail, or just leave it grass, and that would create some snow storage from the town to, to plow. But the nine additional spots won't have any snow storage. He, he just talked about snow storage for the whole complex. The nine spots, you know, when the town plows, I'm sure they're gonna just plow down the street and go straight ahead into the guardrail, like they always do. Now these, this is an open area, the spill-off from the plows are gonna go into his parking spots, the new ones, if he, if he's allowed. And then his guys are gonna come in and just push it at the end of Hillside. So there's gonna be a creation of more snow to cover those, I can't, to cover those new spots. They're not gonna...
No, it's gonna be exactly the same, really.
No, they're not, they're not, the town plows...
You could argue that, yeah, maybe there's more impervious surface, so that, you have to move that.
Well, there's gonna be nine more empty spots that they're gonna have to plow, and that's gonna go at the end of Hillside, and so, there's no snow storage on their property, it would be the town property that's at the end of Hillside. So they push, at least push the guardrail back if they're allowed to, to the, the parking, and that would help for snow storage, even for the town. I don't have any pictures from 2015 crazy snow, but I'm sure somebody must, might have something. There, there had to have been, you know, a mountain there. I mean, it was a mountain of snow everywhere. It would, it's, you know, now's the opportunity to do something if they're allowed to do the...
Okay, good.
So the drainage, not planning on doing anything for the drainage?
I, realistically, it's off-site, whatever drainage system's there, not on this property, so we can't make the two contingent.
But they're gonna create more if they're tilting the, the new parking spaces into the roadway?
Our consultant says it's not a problem, so if, if there's a mistake there, there's, data that's not available to them, you're free to tell us that, but believes that's what they've said is the circumstance, so...
All right, and then, let me just, I made some notes. So drainage, snow storage, plowing, assigned spaces, you already talked about that, and how many spaces do they currently have now, per thousand square feet, for the whole complex? Might not be an easy question off the top of your head, but...
They're currently 259 parking spaces on site.
So do they have, how many, how does that work? For square?
You'd have to know what the gross square footage is of all the buildings.
It says 84,122 square feet of gross floor area, three buildings.
So there you go.
So the, what would be today's zoning for, if they were building brand-new, how many parking spaces would they need?
If the office use was deemed medical, they would be required to have 378 parking spaces.
Okay, so it's quite a bit.
How many do they have?
They currently have 252, I mean, sorry, 259.
There's something to be said that the margin for these standards, you know, I mean, because this is, there is an obvious parking problem here.
Have they examined any, any other options, leasing parking spaces from the pharmacy that's sort of on the back end, like that? Is that a possibility to, is a...
The Rite Aid is...
The Rite Aid, yeah. I mean, they could do whatever they want, I guess, if they... I don't know if that's an option, has been brought up, alternatives.
Mr. Chair, I, I just said a few things. Number one, there's a, there's a wetland on the Rite Aid property line and the Chestnut Green property line, and there's no, there's been, Rite Aid, they were approached several years ago by the Chestnut Green Board to see if they could lease spaces in Rite Aid. Had no interest in doing it. Mr. Kennedy, who owns the property, would love to lease the spaces to Chestnut Green, but his lease doesn't allow him the ability to lease them. So Chestnut Green did try to lease the Rite Aid spaces, that's the short answer, and Rite Aid said no. In terms of the guardrail, I've, I've got a photograph at the end of the cul-de-sac, if you'd like to see it, but essentially, the guardrail location, not put there by anybody with Chestnut Green, the town put the guardrails. So, you know, if there's a need to move the guardrail, that would be, I talked to North Endover DPW, because it's within the Hillside Road right-of-way, it's not on the Chestnut Green land. The parking spaces are to the left of the mature trees that are there, and there is a snow storage area that's between the walkway and the parking that we have provided on both sides. And if you go back to your aerial photograph, you'll see that there's no vegetation there now, other than grass, that would inhibit the ability to put the snow there. So that was kind of our plan. What we told DPW is, they currently plow the cul-de-sac, and that, what we would do is, we would plow the spaces, and we would plow the snow back in that direction, towards the front parking lot, and we would plow the snow in this direction, towards the spaces, that's where the snow is currently stockpiled, to the right of the walkway, and that's in my email to DPW when the issue came up with them. And that's in my email to DPW when the issue came up with them and with also public safety. So, essentially, that's, that's about it. The town will continue to plow the turnaround, I think, especially if we are granting an easement to the town if that happens, which I would assume it's going to. They will continue to maintain it. We would maintain the spaces. Because we have porous pavement, there's no need to provide additional drainage. There'll be no increase in the peak rate of runoff. All the water would be stored in the ground and infiltrated into the ground and recharged to the groundwater table. So, essentially, that's, that's it. Moving the walkways and there's no increase in impervious area due to the relocation of the walkways.
Quick question on the.
Yes, if you can come up again, please.
I'm not familiar with the porous paving. Is it a just crushed down that they put down or is it a material that's like hot top, but it's drainage? Is it pea stone or?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Specifically, there's four inches of bituminous concrete. So, it's an open grated porous asphalt. It's, this is, the design that we follow was developed by University of New Hampshire. Then there's three, there's four inches of three-quarter inch crushed stone and then nine inches of gravel. And beneath that, there's three-eighths inch of pea gravel and underneath that, there's four inches of three-quarter inch crushed stone. So, you have a total depth of reconstruction of the paved section of 34 inches long or less. That's what it looks like. So, so basically, all that stone under the pavement holds the water in place. But at the surface, it would look like regular pavement. On the surface, it looks like regular pavement. It's a little open grated, but essentially works really, really well.
But there are different maintenance requirements for that.
Right. The, the area is not, that would not be sanded. It would be, you'd use a chemical on it if it was necessary. One of the nice things of porous pavement is that you usually don't have to treat it at all because, because the water infiltrates so quickly. Soon as the pavement warms up from the sun, even on a 20-degree day, it still creates a area between the ice and the pavement that heats up and causes the ice to melt and tend to have no ice on it.
Although the consultant did say that there would need to be maintenance requirements for the porous pavement.
It's got to be, it's got to be vacuumed twice a year. Should be. At least once a year, should be twice. Have a vacuum sweep.
Okay. Good. Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
The issue about the plowing, the town never goes in that cul-de-sac, ever. Only the Chestnut Green people do that. I mean, I've been there 19 years. I've watched it.
I, I, I can't tell you that the town does or doesn't have the guy go in there. Chestnut Green doesn't plow it. And Town DPW talked to me about plowing.
Right.
So, they, they think they plow it. And Chestnut Green thinks.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think there's a miscommunication going on between the two of them.
Well, the town thinks they do and Chestnut Green thinks they don't. So, then somebody does.
Right. Well, they're always cleaning off in front there because that's where all those vehicles come. So, they do that sweep around and they kind of, that's why we are left with a mound. I mean, I know this is a whole other issue, but, so, what they think they do and what they actually do are two different things. It's just like when they took down the buffer. So, now there's been no buffer between the neighborhood for going on over 12 years.
Well, one of the advantages of site plan review is we can condition certain site improvements.
Sure. I know, I'm probably stretching this out.
Maybe now the plowing will get done.
Maybe.
I guess that's what I would say.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
The DPW did communicate they do plow it. Maybe it's subcontractor trucks and they're not logoed with North Andover. That's a possibility that you see in pickup trucks, but not.
Sure. Yeah, we have the ones that come through our neighborhood, but they just never get in that cul-de-sac.
Their initial concern is they thought the parking spaces were going to be on the pavement and they did have concerns about their plowing practice.
Sure.
And then, once it was explained it's actually off pavement, they were more satisfied with it, so.
Are they completely off pavement?
Yes.
Because what's, what's this little dotted line on the plan?
They're completely off the pavement.
But what's the little dotted line then? That's in the parking spaces?
That's the easement.
Okay, so they're in which easement?
The roadway easement.
So, how can we let them to build parking lot spaces in the roadway easement?
There really is no roadway easement. There's a line that I.
It was voted on by the.
No, there was a line that I drew on a plan originally when Chestnut Green was being built. The town was supposed to receive, I have a copy of the county engineance plan. County engineance was supposed to do an easement plan. They did the plan. It's recorded, but there was never a deed from anybody to the town. So, when they started conveying out units at Chestnut Green, they asked me to draw an easement that followed the pavement so that when they gave deeds out to the owners of the units, they could deed it subject to the grant of an easement to the town. But the easement grant was never, never given. So, the easement line that you see is one that I drew parallel to the edge of the pavement so that they could convey units out in the condominium.
We did do registry work and we did not find an easement. And DPW additionally did their own research and they too found that they do not have an easement.
So, the reason.
But was there ever any minutes on the easement? Was it brought up to the board of selectmen and just never, no one actually executed it?
We can go further and do some more research if the board of selectmen entertained the easement, but to our knowledge, there, there had not been. But the VIZ on the recorded plan at the registry associated with the deed for Chestnut Green.
Right. And.
So, Chestnut Green recorded it, but then the town never did their process. There was supposed to be some.
Well, no, but there was no site plan review, so there was no approval that, they didn't have to go to any board. They just had to go to the building inspector. The, the nice thing is that the board has, the Chestnut Green Board has the ability, according to Attorney Ankle at Perkins, well, I think it is their condominium attorney. They have the ability to convey the easement. That's the good thing because in the documents, they reserved out that easement. So, you don't have to go to each lender. Your debtors maybe has a mortgage on his unit. You'd have to normally go to the bank to get a release. You don't have to do that because the conveyance was made subject to the easements shown on the condominium site plan as was shown. So, everybody believes that the board has the right to convey it to the town. This never was. Yeah, what I'd like to recommend, because I think this is pretty good discussion, but it's been a fairly long discussion, is that I think everybody has an interest in trying to improve the situation out there. So, it would, I think you've gotten a lot of feedback from abudders that you should take into consideration, possibly even should meet with them separately from this. We certainly, if you have ideas or recommendations, you know, feel free to come to the board if you want to look at the drainage study. You can do that. There's a lot of things. As I said, I think in the end, we, we have our bylaw to follow, but we also want to do what's best and we'd like to end up with a solution, as Pete said, that's better than what we have today. So, that's, that's really our objective. So, I think if we all kind of collaborate here, maybe we could end up with something a little better. So, we'll, we'll, yes.
Just one final question.
Yeah.
Are they going to be designated, those nine spots, it's going to say employee parking only or something like that or, because otherwise, it's just going to be racing to them and that's a big concern of mine.
I think that's the intent.
Okay. Unless there's signage, people will.
We don't, we don't show it on the plan. I certainly think the board could condition that be done.
Sure.
Yeah, we could, we could. I think that's the intent. Everybody, everybody would prefer that their employees park there.
Yeah, because I even said that before coming here. I'm like, that would be a good idea if they used it for employee parking.
Yeah. I mean, you'd rather have your patients be closer to the door and your employees working away. We have, we just, before you came, you know, I mean, came on, we had the decision with 100 conditions, so it's a condition or two.
I know, we've labored long. Just on the buffer zone and the landscaping, I think gentleman here did mention they did take down a lot of the landscaping when he.
We have some ability to add some landscaping back, so.
Compared to the other office complex at the other end of Hillside, it was real nice landscaping.
Yeah.
Because we get a great view of a dumpster and all the cars. Now, it's.
Is the dumpster, you're fenced?
No, no. There's one, maybe, well, it's just beautiful. The front is so, it's just right there in front of our place.
I believe the border health requires to be fenced in.
There's maybe a fence on the side.
Okay. Well, let's.
The one on the far side of the parking lot is.
Take a look at that.
So, let's, yeah, definitely is.
So, we'll be back in two weeks. Do we have anything?
20.
Yeah, okay.
So, how does it work for us just to get the procedure clear?
Well, I mean, I think what we do is we will, I don't know, do we have actually any information that we don't have that we need to?
We can do further research in regards to the easement and see if there was anything brought up to the board of selectmen in terms of accepting that.
And then, okay, so we'll do that the next time and then, then the next meeting after that, we would typically vote. So, to the extent that you have new information that you can bring, next meeting is the time to do it or up to the next meeting because Gene Rebecca, you know, can handle anything that comes up, so.
John, could we maybe ask to get some photos?
That would be a good idea.
For the next meeting?
Yeah.
So, we can see the different views from the abutting houses towards the office building, from the office building towards the abutting houses, looking down Hillside at the roundabout and the guardrail, just so we can have a clear picture of the current conditions.
Can we talk to DPW and see if it's, have you had some pool of that bad weather?
Thanks.
Yeah, you can ask them. And then, obviously, we'll all have the chance to go out there, you know, and walk around, which is always helpful, so. I have several, I have several photos. I'm happy to email them over, so.
Not to cut through to 125, though.
No, we're all legit, all legit, yeah.
Sorry.
I've never even thought of you.
You didn't even have a thought of it.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Don't tell anyone about the.
Oh, no, no, it's not on camera either.
It's like an honorary member.
Okay.
So, is this hearing continued?
Yes.
Yes.
Till the next time. Okay, moving right along, we have several discussions here. This is very exciting. The DPW boat launch.
It's a discussion.
Pete, what's the story here?
Actually, I believe I need to recuse myself because I'm part of the late group that's been involved.
Right, but can we move the other to then because we've never.
Oh, okay, sure. Okay, yeah, okay. So, 1211 Osgood Street. What's that? I don't even remember.
It's the former place, Flores Building, that has been purchased by Harry Canelis since that was permitted.
Good evening.
Yeah. So, this is remind, this is where Lots of Eats is or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, at the time a modification was done, there was a condition in that they were going to do a parking analysis because they had asked for a reduction in parking. So, at a six-month and a one-year timeframe, and I think we're at the one-year now from their CO. It changed ownership and there was some confusion over whether Lots of Eats was going to do that analysis or the new owner. So, the new owner has presented it. You should have a copy of that. The decision was distributed in the packet. Do you want to read the condition?
So, two parking studies shall be prepared and submitted to the planning board through the town planner, one at a period of six months from the decision and one at a period of 12 months from the decision. These studies shall at a minimum evaluate the existing parking occupancy and vacancy over the course of one consecutive Friday and Saturday at one-hour intervals from the hour of 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. The planning board shall review each study within one month of submission. On review of each parking study, the planning board may by vote require corrective action related to the reduced parking requirements in the event that the board finds the parking provided no longer meets the intent of zoning by law, section 8.1.8e.
So, all, all that being said, I think the analysis shows they're not at capacity at this point, but Mr. Canelis is actually opening a roast beef pizza shop in what was formerly a bakery. Again, that came before you. I'm doing this from memory because I was not part of this, but if I remember right, the building commissioner deemed it to be not fast food or something to that extent. And so, the parking was a.
To be fast food.
To be fast food and not a restaurant. And the parking, he deemed appropriate at that time. So, I think that's scheduled to open within.
Probably right after the first of the year.
After the first of the year. So, we have another parking study coming up as required as this decision, and that will see the impact of this new roast beef shop.
When would you like that done? Six months from now, once, six months after I open?
We'll leave that to the board.
Or.
I have, I have 10. I have 10 seats as it is and.
You don't, you don't think you need more?
I would like to go for another 10, but I don't know what that entitles.
Well, I mean, let's be sort of, you know, my takeaway from this thing is there's a lot of empty spaces, so, you know, a lot of empty spaces, we don't have a problem. So, let's, let's just be reasonable.
Well, that's what we told him to come back for modification and chances are he could do it, you know?
Yeah, yeah. All I mean is I think you're acting sort of in good faith with us and just as long as we continue to do that back and forth, I think that's fine. So, yeah. I mean, we, we want your business to thrive and we don't want a parking problem.
Neither do I.
You know, I'll be sitting for the.
Yeah. I think we did a lot of parking tonight, too.
Yeah, it's all about the parking. Yeah, don't make it a medical facility. How's that?
So, the next six months, we put it, you at April. I think that's perfect.
Yeah, right.
It gives you some months to get it going and another study.
Yeah.
And then, the belt and across the street will be opening and we'll have all kinds of business.
Well, that's why you might want to try, start working on the modification now because that way.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anything more you need to tell us or?
No, that's, everything's good.
Well, thank you for coming to visit. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Where do I start about the modification? How's that?
Mark with those guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Just a note to the file. There's a couple of other developments out there that, oh, what's this?
Yeah, okay.
So, the other one I know was the Bacon Joy.
Do you know of another one?
And Butcher Boy.
Butcher Boy?
There was one of these.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bacon Joy, Bacon Joy, something, yeah.
Okay, so we got one last item. Unfortunately, somebody had to go last. Sorry about that.
Okay. So, in March of 2015, a subdivision called Riddick Estates was approved at 1046 Gray Pond Road. It also had a watershed special permit issued on that same date, so March 17th to 15.
Where is that?
The former Irving Estates is probably what you know it as.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right, yeah.
So, the subdivision was really on paper to waive all roadway construction. One house was planned to be relocated and to a, so the entire parcel was broken into three lots. There's four existing structures, one to be raised, one to be relocated onto newly created lot with one driveway of construction. Everything else was associated with drainage. It has taken some time to get this subdivision going for various reasons. Arthur is here to describe kind of what's gone on, but he would like to request an to describe kind of what's gone on, but he would like to request an extension to the watershed permit, which included all the drainage that was to be done within two years. And the subdivision tied in a condition that that drainage improvement should be done within that two-year period. So, the subdivision would also require an insubstantial change to reflect the extension of the watershed, should you deem an extension. Okay, so.
So, we had a, a house mover lined up to move the, the building, which fell through. He backed out of it. And so, I've talked to two other house movers. Both said they can't do anything till the spring. And we had that March 17th deadline to get the drainage in. And part of that drainage goes right through the house that needs to be moved onto that, that lot. So.
And I didn't realize that wasn't going to happen by March. So, it's possible that the relocation wouldn't happen? Because you need to begin substantial construction of the subdivision as well within this two-year period. And so, one was to be raised, and that hasn't been raised yet.
No.
So, would you be able to raise that by March?
I think that could be done, yeah.
So, I just, I would question whether you would consider that triggering the subdivision permit being?
Well, I mean, I think the question becomes, I, this was somewhat unusual. Circumstances. And normally, we like to keep to our dates.
Yeah.
But the question is, we better serve by letting this, all these things roll one more year, given the circumstances, rather than make them come back and do it over, or?
There's very little construction to be done, other than relocating a house and raising a house. So, I thought that at least the construction could be started by March. But now, I'm thinking, while you're here, we might want to entertain if that wasn't happened by March.
So, what happens if, I mean, it's for sale, right?
Yes.
What happens if it's sold between now and any of the work being done? What, what happens?
Well, the, the issue would be is, according to things, certain things have to happen before two years. And if they don't happen before two years, the permits expire.
No, no, I get that. But let's say we extend it.
It runs with the land.
But in the meantime, we extend it. And during that extension, the property is sold, but the work has not yet been done.
The person that buys it, the permit-
It's subject, yeah, it's their subject to those.
Yeah, I'm just, I just want to confirm.
Right, no, and that's practically speaking what would happen because it's, you have to make a deal with the person to move the house, right? I mean, that's basic. I guess, yeah.
Well, well, no, that's, that's why I'm asking because it's, it's not a guess. It's, yes, that would be the requirement, right?
If, if, if somebody bought it, they have to be subject to the rules, yeah.
They're not, they're not going to get, be able to buy one of these parcels without this decision being-
They either have to leave it just as it is now, or they have to do what we said to do.
Right.
You could leave it the way it is and never do anything.
But can they buy it before the work is done? Because how could they buy it as just a separate one instead of the whole thing? That's what I'm trying to get at.
I don't think you could sell it.
Ah, so that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't think you could sell it until-
I, I mean, it's listed for sale, but you're saying it can't be sold until that-
I think you could sell it if somebody came in and wanted to buy the whole thing.
The whole thing, right. But you can't sell the separate parcels.
No, no.
Yeah.
I, I just want to be clear on how that works.
Yeah.
Because I guess my concern is, let's say we give an extension. During the period of the extension, unknown to us, it's sold as separate parcels. And then what, I mean, how could we compel the new owner?
What does the decision, how's the decision?
Well, we could because this, this is recorded. So, anybody that buys it, buys it knowing.
Subject to the-
Subject to the conditions, which is deed restrictions conditioned and things like that.
So, when they did their title exam, when they're buying it, they see this.
And if they didn't do the title of thing, they're still buying it. And that could, and that could be- And that's enforceable.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
The lots aren't released.
Okay.
There you go. Sorry, I'm taking this too. But the lots aren't released yet. And-
Great. Okay, so it could be sold as a whole, but not as parts yet.
I guess, I would guess, yeah.
It's a lot of guessing here. No, no, I, I appreciate you, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of the wrong person to ask.
Just saying, yeah, you can't.
So, what's people's pleasure that we extend? Jean, you, you would have to do two things. You would have to extend the watershed special permit-
For one year.
For another year. And you would also have to make a minor change to the subdivision report.
Right, and an insubstantial change to that. And if he was going to request to extend the subdivision plan as well, that could be extended for up to a year.
Yeah.
So, I think you could do six months if you're concerned.
Do you hesitate, do you want to do six months? And then if they don't, they can come back to us again. Six months on both. That brings us from March.
Because I believe it's up to a year in the bylaw.
Yeah, okay. Why don't we do that? Why don't we do that?
I'll make a motion to extend the watershed special permit an additional six months and the subdivision, definitive subdivision, six months.
Also, do you have a copy of the decision for subdivision? I'm sorry, you can finish that motion, but also an insubstantial change to the subdivision. Condition number 11, I believe.
Okay. I'll make a mo, we'll keep it separate then. I'll make a motion to extend the watershed special permit an additional six months.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to extend the definitive subdivision plan to 1046 Grape Pond Road and making a change to item number 11 for the development schedule reflecting the additional time on our prior watershed special permit.
And that we deem it an insubstantial change.
Then we deem it an insubstantial change.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Good?
Good. Thank you.
No, thank you. I didn't read the minutes. Did I read the minutes?
Well, do, the, the, hold over this boat launch thing and we'll talk about it.
Well, they're requesting a waiver of a watershed special permit. We can talk about it. Somehow, we've lost the casting to the computer. I think this project's doomed. So, Peter, you want to recuse yourself if I've heard, right?
But why do, but why do you have to recuse yourself?
Because I'm part of the lake group.
But how's that a conflict?
Working on the new regulations that were adopted by the selectmen in September. And one part of those regulations was to change the boat storage locations, retain three areas for boat access. And in order to do that, DPW has to put together some plans. And I've been part of all of this. So, I'm an advocate of this.
He's been, he's been instrumental in getting it done.
Well, I asked that-
Okay, so he did, he talked to me.
It's okay, we're, we're okay anyway.
But wait a minute. There's another piece of the story.
Okay.
So, Jean?
So, Peter did reach out to me. I ran it by town council. It's more of a better be safe than sorry practice. It's, it's, she recommended that he recuse himself.
So, that, because I asked. Should I be concerned? Because I'm an advocate. And the answer was, better be safe than sorry.
Well, whenever you ask, then you have your answer usually.
I don't understand the concept of that. That'd be like CPQ.
Yeah, I know. I know it seems a little, you're serving too separate.
Yeah, you can.
At any rate, well, we, we have your opinion, which is, which is really all I wanted. I mean, because you think it's a good idea. That's what I wanted to know. If you put your seal of approval on it, we don't have a problem. So, would somebody like to make a motion to waive watershed special permit for this?
I so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And let the record show.
Recuse.
No, I'm sorry. I did read the minutes. I forgot. That's like I didn't have any comments. Anybody else have any comments in the minutes?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve in November 15, 2006 meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there we go.